It's nice to have a great audience today. I hope you all are enjoying this crisp fall day and that kind of interesting storm we had last night. Let's go ahead and start with our invocation with Pastor John Filke with Canyon Bible Church of Prescott and the pledge led by Councilman Shishka.
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, on behalf of all gathered here today and the people of Prescott, I want to say thank you for your kindness and your abundant blessings upon us all. Thank you for life itself and for the measure of health we need to fulfill the calling you have placed upon each of us, for the sustenance you provide and the gift of friendship. Most importantly, thank you for how your gospel reveals God's holiness, man's sinfulness, and our deserving judgment, Christ's perfect, perfect, excuse me, betoning work for us on the cross, and for our crucial need to respond by confessing and repenting of our sin and placing our complete trust in Christ and His righteousness alone. Thank you for the forgiveness of sin available through Christ. Thank you for the ability to be involved in this process, this useful and necessary work for the honor of bearing the responsibilities for all of us. Thank you for this wonderful group of people here today. In the Scriptures, Lord, you remind us, you direct us as citizens to obey our governing authorities, since you have established those authorities to lead by example in promoting peace and order and justice. Therefore, Lord, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and for the assembled council. Lord, I would ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our day, a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people of Prescott, a profound thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and families, and joy in their calling. Finally, Lord, I pray for the agenda set before them this afternoon. Please give each of them the assurance of what would please you the most and what would benefit those who live and work in and around this beloved city of Prescott. And Lord, we pray these things through Christ and His name. Amen.
Please take off your YCCA hard hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Can we do roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Shoal.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Sing.
Here.
Councilman Shishka.
Here.
And let the record reflect that Mayor Mangerelli and Councilman Tenny are excused.
Thank you. Item six, proclamations.
Careers in Construction Science Technology Month.
I guess this is my moment. I can only guess who made the hard hats.
You might need it.
The road to success always under construction.
Okay, so if everybody from the construction world will come on up. I know Sandy probably paid y'all to be here, but that's good. Come on up. Look at that hard hat.
Should we put our hats on?
Yeah, we probably should.
What the heck?
Put our hats on. Join the club.
Glad to have you all here. Come on up. We'll make room. I want the record to show that I was told that they were going to give me the short version. Not all that short. Okay, today, proclamation is Career in Construction Science Technology Professionals Month, October 20th, 2021. Whereas construction science technology professionals play a vital role in building Arizona's future and restoring its past, and whereas the construction industry is one of the nation's largest and most honorable industries, employing over more than 7 million individuals in the United States, and whereas more than 174,000 Arizonians are employed as construction technology professionals, and whereas it is projected that Arizona's workforce will require more than half of a million additional construction science professionals by December 2024 to meet the growing needs for housing, commercial development, and infrastructure, and whereas due to high demand, average hourly earnings in the construction science continues to outpace those offered in the private sector overall, and whereas Career in Science Construction Technology Professional Month is an annual month designated nationally in October to increase public awareness and appreciation of construction science and of the entire construction workforce, and whereas Arizona proudly recognizes both national and state efforts to produce this respectable career to young and younger adults, specifically the work and the dedication of National Center of Construction Education and Research that build your future organizations, Skill USA Incorporated, the Arizona Department of Education, Career and Technology Divisions, the Arizona Department of Economic Security, Arizona Work Initiative, Arizona Construction Career Days, Southern Arizona Construction Career Days, and other similarly missioned organizations, and Sandy and the YCCA. Whereas whereas during October, employees, associates, and schools are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, local community events, whether virtually or safely in person, to inform students of the vast career opportunities and construction professionals during this month. Now therefore, I, Greg Mangerelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Career in Construction Science Technology Professionals Month. And I'd ask if anybody wants to speak, but I know Sandy would love to. Go ahead.
Vice Mayor Shoal, Council, Councilman Blair. Thank you from my heart for honoring and acknowledging this brave and tenacious group of men and women that we have here today. You know I love you all to the moon and back. What you do for this community and our environment, Yavapai County, is beyond anything imaginable. You build our roads, you build our schools, you put in our landscaping, our fire sprinklers, our commercial buildings. Thank you all for being a part of the industry and more importantly, for being a part of my heart. I truly love and adore all of you. So thank you, Council, for representing the industry, the best industry on the planet.
Hey, I want to tell you, you did well. The red light didn't even come on.
So I can still keep talking. This is so exciting. Thank you one and all, and I truly hope that you adore your hard hats.
Oh, we do.
Because you will be wearing them on job sites. And to my team, to my industry partners, fellow men and women, again, I respect you immensely. You're the coolest group of humans and essentials ever. So thank you for being in my life.
Okay, the next proclamation is Dyslexia Awareness Month.
Is there anyone here to accept this proclamation? Okay, I'll go ahead and read it and we'll make sure it gets to the right folks after the meeting. Proclamation Dyslexia Awareness Month, October 2021. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that causes difficulties with reading, writing, spelling, and reading comprehension, and whereas dyslexia affects 20% of the population of the United States, 1 in 5, however, most people with dyslexia never even know it. And whereas yet often dyslexia plays a central part in their daily life and often has an impact on their academic growth, achievement, and self-esteem, whereas it is important to provide effective teaching approaches and related clinical educational intervention strategies for individuals with dyslexia, and whereas every person should have access to the dyslexia support they need regardless of their financial situation, and whereas we should celebrate the diversity, the innovation, the connection, and the strengths of dyslexic people. And whereas Dyslexia Awareness Month is an opportunity to acknowledge educators specializing in effective teaching strategies and to celebrate the perseverance and many achievements of adolescents, students, and adults with dyslexia. Now therefore, Greg El Mangerelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim October 2021 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Thank you. Item seven, please.
Friends of the Jersey Lily Annual Courthouse Lighting Fundraising Event.
Hi, Josh. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I'll try to make sure the red light doesn't go off apparently. The Friends of Jersey Lily Saloon is excited to have the opportunity to be a part of keeping this event going again this year. First of all, we want to thank all of you for front-loading those events. We really think that that's a great effort to keep the community moving forward. Working with Sherri from Chamber and PDP, they were always fairly stressed about we got to get these funds raised because we've got bills to pay. So thank you guys for doing that. We appreciate that. This year, we're back to having the live auction in person. It'll be at full capacity again. The event will also be offered online, so we'll stream it and provide an online link for people to bid from home as well if they would like. The food will be served courtesy of El Charo Norte. The silent auction will remain 100% online and raffle tickets are also available online or in person at Jersey Lily Saloon. We found last year that that was the most successful it's ever been, so why mess with it? So we're excited, though, to have the live auction back to full capacity. Silent auction will be able to run for one week, starting November 1st through November 8th. That's a Monday to Monday. And registers can start, or bidders can start registering starting Monday, the 18th of this month. Live auction will be in person again on November 4th. That's the first Thursday of November, and that will begin at 4 o'clock, and in-person bidding will start at 6 o'clock. Raffle tickets again are available online or in person between now and January 13th at the Jersey Lily Saloon. We will do our Lights Out Party on January 13th where we hold the actual raffle and give away the bronze donated by Brad Williams, tires from Prescott Tire Pros, and the jewelry from Raskin's Jewelers. I think you guys all, where you all received the auction item and raffle ticket stuff through your email maybe beforehand. So would anybody like a copy of any of the paperwork for donation items or the event paperwork? Thank you very much, Steve. I appreciate that. Phil Good did pop over and buy some raffle tickets as well.
A couple of days ago.
Steve, I'll get some raffle tickets put together for you as well. Yes, perfect. Thank you, guys. We appreciate your guys' support in this event and helping keep Prescott Arizona's Christmas city. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. Next presentation is from the Prescott Jazz Society.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's honor to have this privilege to speak before you again. It's been some time since I've been here, so I don't know about the red light. I might forget myself. I have at the risk of minimizing the subject with which I speak to because of the presentations that have gone before that are so honorable and important. I want to take this time to just bring up the importance of what the Jazz Society is representing in the 2022 Juneteenth Festival. We are already doing the fundraiser and we have to jump the gun, if you will. It seems early to do that fundraising, but it has become such an important event that it makes it difficult to get the top acts, if you will. You have to go after them early because next year is going to be picked up and nothing left for those that don't jump early. So our funding is to get established where the acts are concerned, where the venues are concerned. But next, let me let you understand how I feel about the importance of the events that we represent. For years, we've represented jazz. All my life, I have represented jazz, promoted jazz, and came into Prescott where there was not much jazz. And we were able to get started with the first festival being in 1994. You probably don't remember it all. You guys are too young for that. But we did. In 1994, we did a festival called the Jazz Splash, which was involving five different clubs, five nights and days of jazz right downtown Prescott. It started at the Old County Seat and moved across the street to a club that was called Penelope Parking Parkers. And then from there to Nolas, and then across the alley to the Boiler Room, and then upstairs to Lizards. And that was like five days, five nights of jazz. All of the clubs that participated, we didn't do anything on Whiskey Row. We just went around Whiskey Row. And it didn't have much effect the first year. So we came back the second year in 95 and tried it again. And pretty much the same thing. We added one more club. We added the Pine Cone Club Restaurant. And as soon as it was over, everybody reverted back to what they normally do, which is like, I guess, I don't know what you call it, blues, rock, roll. So we just became a kind of nomad and started moving the Jazz Splash around until we arrived in Prescott Valley where they became so interested that we were able to negotiate a deal with Prescott Valley that allowed us to accept the invitation from Arcosanti to move the Jazz Splash into Arcosanti. But at that time, it was my desire to represent the Juneteenth instead of just the Jazz Splash. So it became the Juneteenth Jazz Splash Festival. And for the past next 20 years, that's what we did. We represented the Juneteenth. Now, the Juneteenth has become a federal holiday. Now we have the honor and the privilege of representing two great aspects of this country's culture. One is jazz, which has become a national treasure decreed by the government, the Congress. And now we have the Juneteenth, which is a federal holiday. So with the the importance of these two events coming together, I feel that there should actually be a public display because that's the best way I know how to honor it. I mean, we could go out and find different venues to do the festival in, but I think it's more appropriate to do it where we started just this year, on the Plaza. However, that's going to entail a lot more than what normally happens at the Plaza because of the importance of it and the significance of these events that represent a national treasure of the country and it represents a holiday, a federal holiday. Now, what it took for this to happen is something that I could go on for the rest of the afternoon about, how jazz moved from jackass music to jazz, how the Juneteenth took forever to become recognized as a holiday, and all of the extremities that was involved with what people had to go through to bring it from one point to this point of being able to recognize it as a holiday. So my point in saying all of this is that I would like for the council, the city, to actually consider the importance of these events and perhaps apply some significant support for to have it as a public display downtown. I know that brings in a couple of entities that have to work together, the Downtown Partnership in the City of Prescott, to come together and to make this happen, to support it in a fashion that is representative of what it's about. And I would like the support of the council in making that happen, both physically and financially. I'd like to see it physically happen in a public display like the Plaza, although I understand there's some changes being made regarding the Plaza, but I think it can happen if we want it to happen. It can happen. It can be a significant event. We can represent it in the manner in which it deserves, and I think it would be an honor and a real I'd thank credit to the city, to the town, to the area, to be able to represent the humanity involved, but also the fun and the entertainment that comes with presenting the Juneteenth Jazz Splash Festival downtown Prescott. Okay, that's all I have to say, and I think I will probably receive some comments further on down the road, but anybody that would be happy to, that would want to talk about it, I'd be happy to explain the whole event to you, how it happens, what it took to come about, and what it's going to take to make it a real great affair. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and the privilege was mine.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here today. All right, consent agenda. Are there any members of council who'd like to pull an item? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion at this time.
Here I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8F.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Pass this 5-0.
Thank you. Item nine, consent ordinances.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2021-1780. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public sidewalk easement agreement from Denizen JPC LLC and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Okay, and then?
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2021-1781. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Chapter 2-1-9 Utilities Division Abbreviations and Definitions and Chapter 2-1-24 Utilities Division Water Meters, adding a severance clause and adding penalty provisions.
Any questions or comments from council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to acknowledge the value of adopting this sub-metering ordinance for Utility Division so that we can appropriately respond to the growing number of density developments that were originally and historically just on one master meter. So I think this will be a very appropriate addition to our ordinances and being able to make sure that the renters are responsible water users and be able to add one more additional conservation measure to our portfolio of conservation issues that the city has supported for so many years. So I'm glad to see this and I'm glad to see us adopting this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'd accept a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to adopt Consent Ordinance Items 9A and 9B.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Pass this 5-0.
Item 10A, please.
Public hearing and adoption of rezoning ordinance and general plan resolution for 923 Black Drive. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning of certain property within the City of Prescott, generally located on the southwest corner of Black Drive and Willow Creek Road from residential single-family SF9 zoning district to business general BG zoning district.
All right, what do you got for us?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner with the City of Prescott. So we have two requests in front of you today. We have a resolution, which is a minor general plan amendment from low-medium density residential, 1 to 7 dwelling units per acre, to commercial, and an ordinance for rezoning from residential single-family SF9 to business general BG. This is the subject property. This is from our 2015 Land Use General Plan Map. When the general plan map was adopted, this has been a church since the 1960s. And usually when we see a church being developed, it stays a church, and churches are allowed in residential areas. So when the general plan came through, this was a residentially zoned property, so the anticipation was that it was going to stay resident, the same use. So they never updated their general plan to have this as a commercial area as we see in the surrounding area, and it stayed residential. So for this to change to a commercial use, we need to amend the general plan map from residential to commercial. And this is the subject property here. It is Zoned Single Family 9. It is surrounded by commercial uses and zonings, and we have some multifamily high here. So from a zoning, from a planning standpoint, the staff sees no concerns with this. It matches the surrounding area, and it makes sense to have this as a commercial property, and it matches the surrounding area. Here's the imagery of the property. Here's the building here. It has plenty of parking for the proposed use of the property. At this time, we have not seen any plans. At this time, we have not seen any plans for how it's going to be converted, but that will be in the future when they're ready to move forward with that. Then here's an overall picture that shows the Walmart Shopping Center in relation to Gil Gardner and the property, and then some pictures of the property that were also in your packet. This did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 30th, and they voted unanimously in support of both requests as they were presented. So if council choose to approve this, both of these, the resolution and the ordinance, here's our some recommended actions to move this forward. And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tammy. Councilman Blair?
I'm not opposed to the resolution or the rezoning. I think it goes back, George, I think maybe you had just come on board when there's a Willow Creek overlay district that was put in place. And back in the day, Willow Creek Road was a two-lane dirt road, then to a two-lane paved road, and then to a five-lane paved road in a major arterial. At that time, the Willow Creek overlay plan was in place, and that whole area was looked at, when I was on council, as going to commercial. But there was residential areas on Black Drive that chose to remain residential until they decided to sell the property. So this is, the point I'm trying to make is this is not a new item. It's always been looked at as being a business general opportunity, but the way we do churches in our zoning code, that they can be anywhere in our zoning code with a conditional use permit in any residential, in any zoning area. And this church has been there for a long time, and now it's finally getting its appropriate zoning, as far as I'm concerned. So I don't have a problem with this at all.
Thank you. Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Yes, I monitored the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration here, and I think most of us who've spent any time in that area by Walmart and natural groceries, et cetera, have watched this area kind of evolve into a truly a commercial type of a corridor. So I think this particular step, it's a pretty good-sized parcel, allows it to move into that direction with the remaining residential components eventually probably moving similarly to make that a kind of a total commercial area. So I know we're already seeing a new property being developed right there across of Ainsworth, which is a little bit below this area, but it just shows you the amount of interest, I think, when you have high-volume artaria and the traffic that supports commercial development. This is an appropriate rezoning and appropriate development. Could you, by the way, Tammy, mention what a minor plan amendment for the general plan is?
So in state statutes and in our general plan, we designate what's a minor general plan amendment, what be a major general plan. Minor's ours based on acreage and use, so this didn't meet the criteria for a major. A major general plan amendments are only heard once a year.
Right, and they require a much broader review of a change of the general plan for something of that size.
Correct.
So this is considered a minor amendment change, and it's subject to just a review and a vote.
Correct.
Right? Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. I just would like to sum it up and say, let's get this on the tax rolls.
Jennifer, any public comment?
No, there are no public comments.
All right. Looks like we have three motions here. Anyone want to give them a go?
Mayor Protam, I'll make that motion to move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Pass this 5-0.
Mayor Protam, move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-1799, General Plan Amendment.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Pass this 5-0.
And finally, move to adopt Ordinance Number 2021-1782, a rezoning.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Pass this 5-0.
Item 10B, please.
Adoption of Resolution Number 1798, Establishing a Council Policy for Naming of City Facilities.
Hello, Tyler.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, council. This might be the first time that I'm looking forward to being here. It's because I'm having to sit up there all day, but feel more in my comfort zone here. So as you remember, a few meetings back, we brought to you some ideas for a policy of naming city facilities, city property. We received your feedback. We took some elements from other cities, communities from across the country, and Arizona specifically as well, and put them together here. So if it's okay, I'll walk through this. I'll try to make it brief. It's not very long, less than a page. But let me know if there is more feedback. This is before you for approval, unless there's changes you would like to make. So with that, in the first section, "The City Council shall review and evaluate all requests for the naming of or renaming of any buildings, facilities, trails, or any other property owned by the city. Section B, city buildings, facilities, trails, or any other property owned by the city should not ordinarily be named after an individual except by the criteria below. The individual must be from Prescott or the Prescott area, should have accomplished something that was significant or extraordinary in nature, the name should engender a positive image that is not controversial in the community. The individual can be living or deceased. If living, permission for the naming and specifically which facility is being named must be received from the individual. If deceased, permission must be received from a close surviving family member if there is one. The naming must be accompanied by a public comment period of 30 days following a city council study session before consideration during a voting meeting. At the voting meeting, a summary of the public comments received shall be shared with the city, council, and public." And the last section, "The following is the procedure for naming. The mayor or two council members or a member of the public may request that a name be considered. The mayor or two council members may place the item on a study session agenda for consideration, or a member of the public may request of the mayor or two council members to have an item placed on an agenda for consideration at a study session. And finally, the request shall include the name of the individual, the significant or extraordinary accomplishment or contribution, and what building, facility, trail, or other property owned by the city is requested for naming, as well as written permission from the individual or a close surviving family member. This should be done in writing and sent to the city clerk to be properly placed on the agenda." With that, do you have any feedback, any changes? Is this what you were looking for?
Councilman Blair?
Tyler, I think that's exactly what I was looking for, except I have one comment. If you'll scroll down a little bit.
Yes.
Right there, it says, let's see where it is. Oh, "If living, permission for naming and specifically which facility is being named must be received from the individual." Well, I'm not going to be arrogant enough to walk in and say, I want something named after me. So it just kind of didn't seem right after reading down and reading the rest of it to where the council, or the mayor, or somebody could request that to happen. So it seems out of place, or seems kind of arrogant, that an individual could put his own name up to be recognized. And I'm not sure that was the intent of what we wanted to see.
I read that as like, if someone were to nominate a living person for, to be, for a facility to be named after, you'd need permission from that living person.
Okay. Then that's the way it's read into it?
So that they're okay with their name being used and which facility, like, you know, if you were living and they wanted to name the sewer plant after you, you may not want a sewer plant named after you, so you could, you know, say, no, thank you.
And that is the intent of why we included that.
You might, you might, I don't know. I guess because of the way I read it, you might want to just do a tweak on that and clarify it. I'm okay with it, and I appreciate Lexit for looking at it that way, because I would agree with. I don't think anybody would go, come in and say, I want to put my name up for something.
Well, and if they did, they would either need the mayor or two council members, and I think we'd be like, no, thank you.
Well taken. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin?
I'd just like to comment by saying thanks to city staff and city council for being so responsive. This is something that we've needed for a long time, and it was driven by the public. And I'm thrilled that we have a policy in place that will give the public a chance to have some input on the naming of our public buildings and city property.
Thank you, Tyler, for all your work on this. Last time we talked about this, I think I was one of the only ones who wasn't super in favor of naming facilities after someone, so, but I think this is a pretty robust policy with kind of lots of checks in place, but I would just caution future councils to, you know, just think a lot about naming something. That's a big, a big deal, and we want to make sure that it honors the person, but also honors the community and the wishes of the community. Councilmember Jessica?
Thanks, Mayor Protam. You know, again, in that, number one, in that first paragraph, it says, when it's talking about the individual being from Prescott, it also says, "The name should engender a positive image that is not controversial in the community." And so I would imagine that if there was any controversy, it would come out in that 30-day period, right?
Yes.
Okay. So one of the things that I would hate to have and have happen is to put somebody up, and then all of a sudden, the dirty laundry comes out in the 30-day period, which kind of, you know, takes away from their memory or their name. And so I think that we need to think long and hard about, you know, whether we want to put that person up before a 30-day public comment period or not.
That's a good point. You don't want to put someone's character on trial.
And everybody looks, everybody looks at character in a different way.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Councilmember Rusin?
Oh, I would just like to stress that there's many other ways that you can honor your loved one or an exceptional person in the community. I support all the scholarships that are available from Yavapai College, maybe the high school, Emory Riddle, and, you know, there's plaques, memorials, there's many other ways to honor people, not just by naming a building after them.
Well, again, I can appreciate that, but on the other hand, I'd rather see a new street named after somebody that was meaningful in the community than 134th West Avenue 9. You know, I mean, that really should be something that, somebody that's been here a while that maybe made a difference in the community, and there's a street, when you talk about Gil Gardner Way, and if people do the history of downtown Prescott and all the streets that are named here, they'll find out that there are very much people of meaning in this community, and I respect that.
Any other questions or comments from council? Councilman Good?
Yeah, I think this is probably an overdue policy need. Sometimes when a well-known person does pass away, there's a immediate kind of effort to try to recognize, and I think sometimes slowing that down, creating a process like this in a policy, so those concerns can be kind of considered before a decision is made, because you're right, sometimes immediacy creates a kind of a momentum to go in that area, and sometimes we need to kind of slow down a little bit and realize that there may be some controversial aspects to that concern. And this allows not only the person who wants to have someone have a property or a street named after them, will kind of also have to go through this policy, consider it, and maybe think about whether they want to put their nominee through a kind of a public process. So I think that'll probably at least allow those names to really meet this criteria, to make sure they're significant and positive for the city. So I think it's pretty well thought out, and I imagine we'll probably run into some unintended consequences, but I think we're much better off adopting a policy like this and then see how well it works.
Any public comment, Jennifer?
No.
Okay. Anyone would like to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor Protam. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-1798.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Pass this 5-0.
All right. Thank you, Tyler, for all your hard work on that. We appreciate it. Item 10C.
Approval of City Contract Number 2022-084 with Corolla Engineers for the 2022 Water and Wastewater Models Update.
Welcome. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, council members. Craig Dotseth, Public Works. I'm not sure about naming the whole treatment plan. Maybe a duck blind at the recharge ponds? So this item I bring before you today is approval of award to contract with Corolla Engineers to update the 2018 Water and Wastewater Model Master Plan. So the update will bring into play a new system that has been added to the water and wastewater systems, replacement systems. As we've done CIP projects over the last four or five years, we incorporate all of that new information into it. As well, over time, as we're working on the system, we find out new information about it, different than what maybe our map showed or what we believed was there. So as we get all that new information, we have to incorporate it into the model, as well as then consider new, like, master plans associated with, for instance, AED that just came about. So then we bring that into the models. So utilizing the models, capital improvement needs are prioritized in relationship to identified deficiencies associated with low pressure, inadequate fire flows, pipe capacity, inflow and infiltration, age and condition, and critical services, all to provide reliable water and wastewater services to our community. So both models are in the GIS system, our mapping system, or geographical information systems, is GIS. From that, it allows us to run scenarios. So if we're considering a project somewhere, then we put a scenario in there for a fire flow to protect a new business or a new subdivision somewhere, and we're able to run that scenario and see how the water system will react. Same thing on the wastewater side. We're able to add a demand and put that flow into the system, so then the model will give us that information, react, and tell us whether our system is capable of handling that. So that all comes into play. Additionally, the master plan identifies and organizes capital improvement plan and infrastructure improvement plan for improvements to the water and wastewater systems. And both of those ultimately are guidelines or give us guidance in rate and fee evaluations. So what, what is the rate that we need in order to be able to continue maintaining and/or replacing system? For instance, the downtown area, we, you know, our water system is getting to be close to 90 years old, so we're going to have to have a capital improvement project to replace that and upgrade that, so then we have to be sure that we have the funding to be able to do those projects. So updating the models periodically is necessary to ensure it's accuracy and it accurately represents existing system conditions. So Corolla was selected to perform the update due to their intimate knowledge and past experience with the city's complex water and wastewater systems. This project will be completed within one year in order to supply the needed information to complete the required infrastructure improvement plan, plan update during the FY23 budget year. So we're actually about six months ahead of what we normally look at as far as a five-year cycle on updating the models, in order to be able to then do the update to the infrastructure improvement plan to meet the state guidelines and our requirements there for that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Councilmember Rusin?
Is there a member of Corolla? Is that how you say it?
Corolla, yes.
Is there a member of Corolla Engineering here today?
No.
Okay, because I have, I have a few questions. I understand we, we did this in 2018. This is an update from 2018?
Correct.
And how much was the contract for the 2018 update?
It was in this vicinity, in the upper $300,000 range as well.
Okay. And I see that there, it's a long-range planning tool for five, 10, 15 years. Well, it's only been two years. I mean, it's only been three years, so I assume that three years ago, they had a five-year plan? So isn't there some kind of an overlap if they were doing a five-year projection three years ago? Why are we doing it so soon?
No, we, we completed it, so we've used it for 18, 19, 20, and now 21. It's going to take us a year to complete this, so we're, I mentioned, we're about six months ahead of the normal schedule where we would have been. So we'll be- of the normal schedule where we would have been. Um, so we'll be at like four and a half years when we're completing it versus, um, versus right at five years. But we have the other deadline that we have to meet for the state. So that's why we are that six months ahead.
Um, and then my, my next question is, uh, we're going to be generating a lot of data, and, uh, do we own the data, or does the engineering company own the data, or who, who uses this data? Is it just for the city of Prescott?
It's, it's just for, it's just our systems for the city. We as a city own it all. Corolla, um, they back us up, and that's one thing that they have been excellent over the years working with. When they complete this project in a year, then a year after that, we call them up and we ask about something and that. They have always been there to support us and help us with, um, small pieces in that over time without coming forward with charges.
Okay. And then, um, I have another, uh, comment. Um, as you know, we provide water, um, outside the, uh, city limits and it to the county. And we also provide water to, uh, Prescott Valley, uh, especially our new section 33. And, uh, we also are providing water now to a four-mile stretch along, uh, Chino Valley, Highway 89 frontage. So involving those communities, uh, shouldn't we be involving those communi- communities in splitting this $400,000 cost?
It's, it's all part of our water and/or wastewater systems. And even, for instance, with section 33, as per the development agreement, Prescott Valley has the potential to annex that land in. The water and wastewater systems will be ours wholly. All rates and fees will be associated with our water and wastewater systems and the operations of it. Um, these models are not something that we put out to the public and/or, you know, engineering firms, you know, to, to use for other projects, because there's so much information in them that kind of, that comes under the, um, Security Act. Um, so we keep them very close, um, and, and secure that way. Um, so no, it's not a matter of, of including them. The, that's part of our rates in those service areas.
Okay, because in my research, uh, Corolla had a very good, uh, reputation. It looks like a wonderful company. And of course, I 100% support all of our infrastructure, uh, efforts and, uh, the ability to, you know, make sure they're top-notch and, uh, and functional. But I just had a, a lot of, uh, reservations about this. And, uh, one of my other questions is, um, we might be, um, possibly, uh, with the new council, the next council, uh, looking at our, uh, water policy, maybe potentially making some changes. Um, do you think that might have any effect on, uh, the Corolla Engineering studies, their variables and data that they'll be looking at?
No, this is about the physical systems. This is about the water and the wastewater systems, how we, what our capabilities are to provide service and deliver that water and/or return the wastewater in the system is what this does.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Craig.
Councilmember, or council, Councilmember.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. So I would anticipate that, uh, the last study probably did not incorporate the, uh, annexation of Arizona ECO because it hadn't happened yet.
Correct.
And now that it has, uh, me, being able to make sure that this, uh, model can incorporate the infrastructure needed to support, um, the development in that area is, uh, pretty darn important.
Yes.
Um, I imagine that also will apply to the ongoing development at, uh, Deepwell Ranch.
It does.
Yeah, because we've seen that even, uh, within Deepwell, the developers' interpretation of what can be built where seems to, uh, change, um, with the seasons, or even maybe more frequently. And that certainly would impact what amount of, uh, infrastructure is going to be needed to support those areas.
Yes.
So does this have the ability to kind of modify their model, or their model will just, uh, be able to be plugged in with a new, uh, set of, um, scenarios within those developments and then be able to tell you what, um, is going to be needed for water and sewer lines, et cetera?
The, this will look at those areas, for instance, AED. So then it will look at the, at the potogra- topography of that area. Um, and then we look at, okay, will our existing water system be able to serve the proper pressures needed there? And/or how will it need to be manipulated to serve a certain area? Same thing on the wastewater system. How does projects some direction when they come, come forward and have questions on how their, their area would be fed? Um, then it helps with, if there's any capital improvement projects that would be needed in our system in order to, to supply that, then we can bring that into play for potential off-site improvements associated with those projects. Um, and/or a IIP, Infrastructure Improvement Plan project, where we would actually put into place, um, development impact fees in order to get that development area net to, uh, fund that project if it was going to be something that we as a city were going to build.
Are we going to anticipate having to, in essence, pay, uh, $100,000 a year, uh, to Corolla or any other provider that can create and maintain these models, uh, going forward as long as we still have continued, uh, development, significant development?
No, as I mentioned, when they, we did that project and finished that back in 2018, over the years since then, they have continued to work with us and help us on, um, different pieces. If, if something came up that we weren't able to, to modify and/or update in it ourselves, they, they've been there to help support us. And no, we have not been charged over that time with that. That's one thing they've been.
You were saying that the, uh, 2018, uh, contract was a similar cost.
Yes.
And here we are, a few years later, paying a similar cost for another five years of, uh, modeling and capability. So if you divide those total costs by the number of years, it's probably coming out to about $100,000 a year.
Okay, that's, that's a way of looking at it.
Is the, uh, the capacity and the capability of this, uh, model continuing to expand with more, um, functionality, or is it just a matter of, uh, um, upgrading the data and the, uh, uh, the developments that the model is, um, providing information for you to use?
No, it is expanding and, and coming in with new technology as well. Um, for instance, and I'm, I'm going blank on the term, um, extended state, extended period, uh, simulation. So that is the, the ability for us to look at, um, instead of a instantaneous fire demand right now and how it reacts, we're able to put a demand on there and look at it. How does the system react then over multiple hours? So that's a, a additional piece that we're bringing into play here. Um, another piece that we've talked about, um, is potential to look at water age. So no, it is including newer, uh, additional pieces. Um, we've expanded on the age and condition also as part of the model, because we're coming closer to the end of major capital improvement projects because of deficiencies, and we're going to be moving into more of the age and condition. For instance, the downtown area, like that 90-year-old, we're, we're going to have more capital projects that are associated with age and condition versus deficiencies where we're not able to, um, supply proper fire flows. And that's what we've been concentrating on for at least 15 years. Our capital projects have been taking care of those deficiencies.
Does this have the ability to help you prioritize your, uh, capital budgets?
Yes.
To see if, uh, not only providing additional infrastructure to new development, but also determining where, uh, current development has to be, uh, upgraded or replaced and, uh, at what, what priority level?
Yes, it brings that into the capital improvement program and those priorities, uh, as well as the IIP as well, because we have to look at those projects, um, due to the IIP, we have to complete those projects within 15 years.
Right.
So we can identify them, we can start collecting those fees to have those funds then when that project goes forward. So it helps with prioritization on both of those.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Councilmember.
I just have one last, uh, comment. Um, as you know, with the lake levels following at Lake Mead and Lake Powell, uh, there's, uh, they're having to lower the turbines, there's less flow, and they're generating, uh, less electricity. And going forward, it looks like, uh, solar and wind is going to take more importance. Um, I would like to request that you ask Corolla if maybe they could, uh, go, go forward, look at, because they look at energy use, if maybe they could look at maybe using solar for the lift stations and for our, uh, sewer treatment plant. Look at the cost benefit and the, uh, actual use and how it would, uh, benefit us.
Okay, and that would be an aspect that would come into play with a capital improvement project. So when we're actually designing and building, the, one thing we definitely have been doing is looking at, as the efficiency of pumps. So any new pumps that we're putting in and motors, we are trying to have the highest efficiency pump and/or motor combination that we can in order to help with those costs, uh, associated with that. So that comes directly into a capital project as far as being designed and built versus here identifying the need for a project.
And also, I'd like to bring up, um, climate change and all the excessive swings in temperatures that we've had and that we don't have the same problem like what happened in Texas with the failure of their water system because their gauges froze because they had that unexpected, uh, ice storm. So hopefully we'll be prepared for climate change and all the unexpected, uh, extremes that we're going to be experiencing.
I, I believe we are. And again, associated with capital projects that we build, every new water pump station and/or wastewater lift station that we build in the system, it includes emergency backup generator. So we have the ability to keep going with the power, um, that way. Um, and then we have a criticality portion of the model that comes into play and then, um, priority in there as well. So that's what we look at too, is that a, a certain piece of the system, you know, there may be one piece that is high, you know, much higher criticality than another piece. So then we, we have a section of the model associated with that. And then if something happens to that piece of the system, then we react differently in regards to response and repair and, and, um, and such associated with solving that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Then I'm going to move to approve city contract number 2022-084.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Passes 5-0.
All right. Item D, please.
Approval of city contract number 2022-080 to Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the Easy Street Sewer Relocation Project.
Hi, Eric.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. Uh, Eric Bay with Public Works. Uh, this next item is to approve a construction contract, uh, for the Easy Street Sewer Relocation Project. And this is a cool little project that Public Works has been working on the last few months. Candidly, it's pretty small. It's only six runs of sewer main, uh, located just north of the city's Fleet Services Building on Virginia Street, south of Easy Street. Um, but it's going to have a huge impact to operations. Uh, so the existing sewer system in this area, it's aged, it's undersized, and we have to clean it about once a month to prevent it from overflowing. Um, we've looked into different rehabilitation techniques. Um, we can't burst this line because there are existing buildings that have been built over the sewer line and we can't risk the structural damage. We can't cure it in place line this line because we just don't have the capacity in the sewer system at this location. So basically, it's a small spot that's a big headache for operations. Uh, so finally, we evaluated relocating this sewer main out and around from the problem area. And we determined this to be the overall best value for operations and maintenance long-term, operations and maintenance, and additionally, the everyday goal of keeping the sewage in the sewer system. Uh, so city staff publicly advertised this project. Last month, we've received two bids, uh, with the apparent low bidder being Asphalt Paving and Supply. Uh, we verified the bid, um, and we have a familiarity working with the contractor and their proposed subcontractor for the underground work. And with that knowledge, we're recommending award today. With that, I'll answer any questions about this project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Nope.
I do have one.
Councilmember.
Uh, first of all, thank you, Eric. You know, I, I just totally appreciate the fact that you love your job. So when you can say, this is a very cool little, uh, sewer project, you know, I know that you mean it. Um, my concern was primarily the engineer's estimate at 483,000 plus. And then we had, uh, the low bid was 40% higher, and the only other bid was, um, geez, about 90% higher. So, um, why is the engineer's estimate so low? Um, it seems like we certainly have labor issues, we have supply, we have materials, delivery issues that are certainly pushing a lot of these numbers higher. Uh, but when you see that differential there, you just kind of have to scratch your head by, um, why is it so, so far off?
Yeah, and I'm actually really glad you asked that because I took notice of that when preparing this council memo myself. Um, a lot of the reasons that you just, uh, rattled off are the exact reasons why we have that discrepancy in prices. Um, engineers, when preparing the engineer's cost estimate, they'll reach into historic files, historic projects, see where bids have come in in the past. Um, unfortunately, nothing in the last several months has acted anything like contractors' bids, um, previous to that. Um, so we expected to see a little bit discrepancy there. Yeah, it was a little bit more than I was expecting to see, but additionally, there were a fewer number of bidders on this contract as well, uh, which just plays to the overall mentality of people are very busy right now. They're being more picky about which projects that they put in for, and the projects that they do put in for, they're coming in at a little bit of a premium. Um, so while there is that discrepancy in the price, uh, it's not of concern to where I think we shouldn't go forward with the project.
I know. I had some conversations with the county because a lot of this ARPA money coming in, substantial amounts of money for, uh, major infrastructure-related projects. And my comment was, it's not like all these capable contractors are just sitting around waiting for these bids to show up. A lot of them are going to be involved in the bigger projects because it's more profitable and there's more consistent, longer-term work. And that takes those legitimate contractors out of the normal bidding pool when we have other projects like this. So it's something I think that we have to, uh, kind of be concerned about, and then make sure that the, uh, projects we're working on have, um, really, uh, justifiable need in the short term to be, be able to make sure that they, these, these get fixed. And then, uh, we may be able to, uh, maybe push off a little bit lower priority projects. Hopefully, the supply chain and labor issues and inflation will moderate like the, uh, the Fed seems to think they will. And I guess we'll find out whether they're, uh, crystal balls or actually, uh, uh, clear or cloudy. Uh, but again, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment?
No.
I'd accept a motion.
Okay, I wonder, um, mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-080.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Item 10E.
Approval of multiple items for the Taxway C relocation project at Prescott Regional Airport as follows. One, approval of city contract number 2022-086 with FAN contracting for construction of Phase 2 of the project. Approval of contract number 2019-069A29, an amendment to city contract number 2019-069 with DIBL Engineering for Taxway C Phase 2 Construction Administration Services. Approval of city contract number 2019-069830, an amendment to city contract number 2019-069 with with Dibble Engineering for Taxway C Phase Three Redesign and Repackage Services. Approval of Night Work.
Welcome, Kristi.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protim and Council. Kristi Miller, Airport Services Manager. So I'm here today to come forward to you with multiple items, as Jennifer mentioned, for the Taxway Charlie Relocation Project at the airport. This project, total cost elements come to $5,407,787. And I'm excited because this is actually going to be 100% federally funded for this phase of the project. 95% of it does come from the Airport and Airway Trust Fund, which is done for all airport improvement projects. And then the remaining 5% that's typically shared between the state and the airport sponsor is actually being covered as well with federal funds due to some legislation in the American Rescue Plan Act. So just as a recap for you, we've actually done Phase One and some other portions of this project already. So you've seen some of this before. But during the, in, back in 2013, during the runway, three right, two and left safety area improvement project, we did relocate Taxway Charlie between Charlie One, at Charlie One and Charlie Seven at those connectors. Again, this project is to move the taxway 75 feet to the north to meet standards for the current runway design code for our critical aircraft. So this project right here, as you can see on the map, this is right here where we're going to be working. And this project was, we did finish Phase One in May of this year. And then this project will be between the C5 and C7 connectors. The FAA did ask us during redesign after Phase One to go ahead and bid it again as a base bid with an add alternate just to, to be dependent on what they had available as far as federal funding was concerned. So unfortunately, at this time, the federal funding only did come through for the base bid. And so we are hopeful though that we should get the next, the federal funding for the next phase, which covers this area in purple and red here for that remaining section, Phase Three for next fiscal year. So we did put this project out to bid on April 11th and April 18th. We advertised it. We did hold a bid opening on May 13th of this year. We did receive two bids for the project. And both bids were found to be responsive with Fan Contracting coming in with the lowest bid for the base bid. So that's who we are recommending to you today for the contractual work or for the construction work on this project. We did have a requirement in the bid documents that the bids did have to be held for a total of 120 days. That did expire on September 10th. However, due to the delay in federal funding announcement, we did go back to both bidders and they did both agree to extend the bid an additional calendar, 45 calendar days. So it did extend it October 25th of this year for us to receive that federal funding. That federal funding did come through on September 21st. We received a grant. It is fully executed. That money is actually in the bank, as they call it. Not our bank, but what I draw the grants off of. I checked it the other day and that money's sitting there ready for me to pull off of, to reimburse or for this project. Again, so this multiple projects or multiple items here do come to a little over $5.4 million, but 100% federally funded. And we can actually bill sponsor administration costs to this as well. So city personnel time spent working on this project can be billed as well to the project. So with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Sounds like a smoking deal. All right.
That's right. I underline no airport sponsor matches required for this project.[1710.22]